I believe.
I'd like to add an agenda adjustment. I'd like to add a motion to approve a leave of absence for Val Safford, for Valerie Safford for the remainder of the 2020, 2021 school year. And that would go as 6.11.
Okay, any discussion on that? These do require approval by the board to make agenda adjustments. So we just don't, either Andy or I slipped something in on yous? So no discussion. And it doesn't require a motion, just needs a board approval.
Okay.
So I vote yes.
All right, Bob?
Yes?
Uh, Dory?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Uh, Andrea? Nope, okay. Uh, did Stephanie get in?
No. Jen's having a hard time. She just texted me too.
Okay, uh, Vicki?
Yes.
Uh, Joan? Joan's not here either.
Neither.
Nope, okay, Robbie?
Yes.
And? One, two, three, four, and wait a minute, Bob, I, I, we gotta hold on here.
Good, Vicki?
Oh, Vicki, one, two, three, four, five. Yes, we're good, we're good, good. Motion carries, sorry, the agenda adjustment carries. I was doing my math out. It didn't seem right.
All right. So we've added that, nah, all right. Trying to get this agenda to show up. For some reason it wouldn't print out for me.
And I think Stephanie's here too. Stephanie, are you here?
I, yes, I am.
All right, great.
Okay, so next order will be 2.1 to approve the minutes of the January 27th Board of Directors meeting.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded.
I've got Robbie and Vicki.
That works.
Okay.
Any discussion, any comments, corrections? But they're pretty thoroughly stated. See, and then then we'll call for the vote.
Right, uh, Dory?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Andrea? No. Let's check there. Stephanie?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
And Joan is not here. Uh, Robbie?
Yes.
And Bob?
Yes.
All right, motion carries.
Hold on, I got Joan on the phone.
Okay.
Hi Joan. Okay, so.
Technical difficulties. Found tonight. So Kathy, I'm gonna make Ben the co-host.
Yes, yes, please.
Where is he? There he is.
Gracias.
No, no problem.
Jen's saying that the phone says the meeting has not started yet.
Weird. Uh. And what was it that you wanted us to say? Beep for the film strip? Yeah, you gotta, you gotta turn your, you gotta turn your mic on though.
A good ding would be good. A ding, right? My slides open ding, it'd be good. Uh, tap of your nose, type your temple. Jamie, we're just letting you know how you're gonna change your slide tonight. Uh, Andy made me owner of this, uh, broadcast here, so in order for your slide to change, you have to give me a signal of some sorts.
Give Joan information for the phone off of the electronic version?
Yep.
Uh, but I didn't know anything about a personal number because it doesn't say anything about that on the agenda.
No, it's there. I don't know where that comes from. That's weird.
I just had, it wanted my personal number. You just hit the pound sign if you don't have one, and it kept on going. Then it prompted me for the passcode. Yeah, it said if you don't have one pa- hit pound.
Okay, all right, well, hopefully she'll get in. All right, so I, uh.
Thank you, Bob. I'm in.
There you go.
Hi Joan. Hello, everyone.
Hi.
Hi, everybody.
Okay. All right. All right, so we've approved the minutes, Joan.
Okay.
All right, petitions and communications?
Uh, I have none. I have none this evening.
All right, then we'll go on to report. Superintendent's report?
Great, uh, so first off, I, I sent you all an email. We didn't notice out to the community, uh, central office is closed down, uh, currently. We did have a, a positive case at the office. Um, obviously with an office our size, you know, contact tracing, once somebody's in the building, they're in the building. It's just, you know, it just is what it is. So we'll be, uh, we'll be closed down through the week. Um, Glenn's team has come in and done it, gonna be doing thorough deep cleanings in there. We'll come back to, come back to the office next week, uh, most of us. Um, and so, you know, I, I put out in the community letter, if anybody needed anything to call the general voicemail box, Michelle's checking it, uh, every hour. Um, or to send emails to us if we need it. People are still working, uh, we still are responding to phone calls. But we can't be in the office together. Uh, I just, I kinda wanted to throw out there, there's been a lot of talk about snow days and remote days. Um, I, I'm telling you all that, you know, my plan is to not call a snow day for the entire year. Um, you know, I think we have the technology, we talked about this at length. Um, there's, there's been kind of a, a push out there to give, give kids a traditional snow day. Um, you know, we don't, we don't ask a ton of them on remote days. Um, you know, there's, there's some time in there, but we, we want them to keep learning. We like the ability to count it as a, as a school day, and I think, you know, that's something I know that we've been talking about here in RSU4 for a long time. If we could ever get around the lunch issue, um, of serving a lunch, that we'd no longer have a snow day ever again. So I just, I wanna let you all know that was my plan moving forward. I don't plan to deviate from that. Um, we'll call a remote day, we'll have remote learning on days when the traveling's not good. Um, I just think, like I said, with the technology, with the things that we've shown that we can do, we're gonna continue to do that. You know, if, if the school lunch, National School Lunch Program stays in summer food mode, um, which I, I'm hearing it potentially will, um, then this will be in place for next year. And I think, you know, the benefits for that are huge, but one of the biggest things is that, um, next year, you know, we won't, we'll be under a minimum school day requirement. So every time we have a remote day, we won't be adding a day on to the end of the calendar. So our calendar will be our calendar as long as the, the school lunch thing stays in play. So I'm excited about that. Like I said, we've talked about that many times in RSU4, and I'm, I'm glad we have that ability. I am working on the application for the SR2 funds. You know, we've, we've got some stuff we've identified, but my big goal is try to help the budget, uh, any way that I can. Um, so Scott and I are working on that. Um, I did schedule another CPT meeting, uh, for right after February break. We've got some, some things we'd like to talk about there, so there'll be some information forthcoming. Other than that, my plan is to give you all the first, uh, first run of the bu- budget, uh, the first meeting in March, uh, do my budget, budget presentation, the first meeting in March. Um, and so, you know, I will actually reach out to all of our towns to let them know that I will be doing that at that meeting in case they want to attend. Um, I always think that's beneficial, so they know what's there. Other than that, that concludes my report.
All right, any questions? All right, so we have one, one appointment and one retirement?
Yeah, we do. Sorry, I, I was just getting to that list. So we do, we do have an appointment, uh, JV Girls Basketball Coach, Arthur Collins, and we do have a retirement. Um, Steve Feldman, and I, I don't know, uh, to be quite honest, how many years Steve has worked in, in either RSU4 or its predecessors, but it's been a long time, uh, you know.
Around 30 years or so.
It's gotta be, yeah. It, it has to be. Um, and you know, Steve does, I gotta tell you, you know, he does some amazing things with kids, and, and I'm sad to see him go. He's very good at what he does. He's great with kids, he's great with staff. Um, you know, I, he and I have worked together. I've, I've done IEP meetings with him. He's just really a credit to the profession. He really is. And so while I'm happy for him, um, that he has made this decision to take the next step in life, I'm sad for RSU4 and for the kids in RSU4 because he's, he does great work. Um, and he's, he's been, he will be missed, that's for sure, so.
All right. Okay, Director, CAI report?
Yes, thank you. Um, last night we had one of our first parent engagement nights for our ESSA under Title I. Uh, we had a pre-KK focused event, um, where parents could see how to help their child in letter identification and first name fluency. Um, these ESSA events are required under, um, under our ESSA law that we, in order to receive our Title I's, um, services and funding, we have to provide some parent engagement, uh, events. Obviously in COVID, uh, we are doing more Zoom-like, uh, events. But the beauty of that is they are recorded and then they are pushed out on our, like Seesaw or other learning platforms the following day. So we have more parents that can, uh, view the information. Uh, for the pre-KK one, we also bought word tiles, uh, or letter tiles for each student that went home with them. Um, so they actually were taught how to use, um, the activities, and in future weeks, uh, the staff will, in their learning plans, require students to engage with those at home during those remote days. Um, we also, let's see, um, we are also working on the Portrait of a Graduate, uh, program or project that we've been working on, um, throughout, uh, the fall. We have met with the graphic designer, so we had, uh, student competition, and we brought those ideas, uh, to the graphic designer, which have given us like three kind of options. We then counteract, uh, you know, kinda offered like this works for us, this kind of meets our needs for RSU4. Uh, so they're kinda still in the draft mode, and, uh, we're hoping to share, um, our reports and our graphic visual representation, um, in March. I will say RSU4 has been highlighted at a WMEC to present our process, uh, through, um, to the Bar Pres- um, to the Bar Foundation, and DOE is actually going to join us as well because they're interested in our work. Um, and then we are also going to be highlighted, uh, for the New England State, um, at a spotlight of practice, um, and that will be later in March. We have some really great opportunities to showcase RSU4. Um, as, uh, Andy alluded that we're going to update the CPT, um, there, uh, we'll have a letter going out on Friday, uh, about travel, um, requirements. So we've been kind of following the main CDC guidelines about travel requirements, um, and there seems to be some, um, differences, especially in international travel, uh, regarding the main CDC and the federal government. And so we finally got clarity, uh, probably about 3 o'clock today, Andy.
Yeah, it was about 3 o'clock today.
Um, after asking after many meetings about which one would you like us to follow? Um, so we've been very consistent in RSU4 when, uh, either staff or students have traveled outside of the approved states. Um, but international travel is usually a more common one in February and April break, um, as people go to warmer islands and beaches. And yes, people are still traveling for, for different reasons. So we finally have guidance, and we will send out a letter on Friday, um, informing everyone of the new.
That?
That's it.
Questions?
We have data coming, so.
Yes, I know. It's so, on travel, I noticed that we have our first cases of the UK variants from a traveler who had been traveling internationally.
Yeah, in Franklin County, yes.
Yeah, Franklin County, yep.
So the international travel as an additional degree of risk, I guess. All right, we'll move on. Uh, the principals will give their reports, I think, under the data down below. Uh, that's your report. Uh, it's our student rep here tonight. I don't see him.
I don't see him tonight, nope.
Okay, Glenn, Transportation and Operations?
I didn't have him having a report tonight. Put the top under the water.
Yeah, because you went and mentioned that we were gonna get a report from him about the high school water situation.
On the agenda.
Oh, is that a separate item?
Yep.
Oh, okay, but, all right, then, no other reports? So we'll go, okay, so we'll go to comments from the floor. So this is a time when people who are not members of the board, uh, have an opportunity to go and make comments about things, whatever they want about the school system. That being said, uh, we don't and can't, uh, personally attack any persons. Verbally to go and, you know, those types of things need to be discussed, uh, hopefully, but between the, the individuals, and then building administrators and then the superintendent if need be. Uh, it's not a time for discussion, it's a time for comments. If somebody in the community has an item that they would like to have discussed on the agenda, and not just make a comment, then I request that they either get ahold of myself or our superintendent. Uh, our contact informations are both on the website. Uh, and we will make arrangements for getting the topic on a future agenda when time permits. Uh, hopefully not in a too far distance. We don't try and push anybody off, but sometimes agendas get pretty full. So with that being said, uh, if you have a comment, we'd ask that you raise your hand. There's a little icon, I think, in Zoom that allows you to raise your hand. You can say something in chat. Uh, the chat is only viewed by the superintendent, and he will relay the comment. That appears in the chat room so that we don't have, uh, as we've had a few times, long exchanges going on between different people in chat while others are trying to make a, a comment. So, um, at that time, or at this time rather, we'll open it up for, uh, comments from the floor.
I don't have anything in the chat yet.
Okay. All right, so I just gotta, this isn't comments from the floor, but Stephanie says she can't join because the password's not valid.
No, I'm here now. I'm on my phone.
Oh, you're on your phone?
Yeah, I'm on my phone.
It just pinged me, so I just saw the.
I'm sorry, I did it like a while ago.
Yeah, my, uh, my message just come in kinda late.
Alright.
I still have nothing in the chat.
Nothing in chat? Nobody raised their hands?
Nope.
All right. So we'll close out the comments from the floor. It has been the practice of the board, uh, not only myself, but other board chairs in the past, Robbie and, and several others, to if we get to an agenda item that really could use, uh, comments from the public, then we will open it up after the board has kind of finished this discussions, if there are any comments that the public would like to make at that time. Again, it's not a time for a lot of great discussion, but it is a time for board members before we vote to get input from the community on a particular item. Not every item is that nature, so like the policies that are coming up wouldn't be that, the report on the waters, probably not much of that, but, um, without looking down at the whole agenda, there may be an item on there, uh, where discussion and asking for input will be valid. So that being said, we're gonna go to 6.1, Student Recognition.
Well, so I'll, uh, I'll turn this over to Marco. I, I don't know if Kylie's here or not.
I don't see her, Andy.
Okay, well, do you wanna, you wanna talk about it just a little bit, just so everybody's aware? Yeah?
Sure, so, uh, Kylie Hyde is, uh, junior at Oak Hill High School. Uh, she's, uh, amazing, uh, kiddo, extremely motivated, extremely intelligent. I've known her since she was a sixth grader, uh, when I was at the middle school, and has just been, uh, extremely impressed with her growth and development, uh, academically as she's moved from the middle school to the high school. Uh, she's constantly taking, uh, challenging courses. She probably takes, uh, more virtual high school courses than anybody else in the high school. Uh, she just has a really, uh, does, she has a strong desire to learn, really is what it comes down to. And so, uh, we, we got a release, uh, from Kylie that she was, uh, nominated for the Congress of Future Medical Leaders. Uh, and, um, if you guys don't mind, I just would like to recognize her for that by reading, uh, a portion of the media release. Uh, so Kylie Hyde is a junior Oak Hill High School, uh, of Wales, uh, and is a delegate to the Congress of Future Medical Leaders on, uh, March 20th and 21st of 2021. Uh, the Congress is an honors-only program for high school students who want to become physicians or go into medical research fields. Uh, the purpose of this event is to honor, inspire, motivate, and direct the top students in the country interested in these careers to stay true to their dream, and after the event to provide a path, plan, and resources to help them reach their goal. Kylie's nomination was signed by Dr. Mario Capricci, winner of the Nobel Prize in Medicine and the Science Director of the National Academy of Future Physicians and Medical Scientists to represent Maine based on her academic achievement, leadership potential, and determination to serve humanity in the field of medicine. And just a little bit in regards to the Congress, during the two-day Congress, Kylie will join students from across the country, and here Nobel laureates and National Medal of Science winners talk about leading medical research, be given advice from Ivy League and top medical school deans on what to expect in medis- medical school, witness stories told by patients who are living medical miracles, be inspired by fellow teen medical science prodigies, and learn about cutting-edge advances in the future in medicine and medical technology. Uh, so quite an honor and distinction, uh, for Ms. Kylie Hyde. Uh, so I just wanted to take a moment to recognize her for her achievement.
All right, thank you. I think, uh, several of us have passed on. Congratulations to her, her emails where we saw the release and notification. All right, so we'll go on to 6.2 to approve the first reading of the policy IHBEA dash R, the LAU Plan, and Policy JL District Wellness Plan.
So moved.
With Move by Joan?
Seconded.
Seconded.
Robbie?
Yeah, yeah, it was two. Robbie was one of them.
Okay.
Okay, any comments on, uh, let's address the LAU Plan first? Any comments on the plan? So my only comment was I don't see any, um, legal citations at the bottom of it.
Well, so.
That'd be a pretty extensive plan if it doesn't have any legal requirements.
So this is actually the structure from the, um, the template that we actually use from the DOE.
Yeah.
And so I actually submitted this LAU Plan to the, to April Perkins, who's actually the DOE consultant. Um, and she just approved, uh, the structure, um, and all of the components, and so this is what their template is and their recommendations, uh, to get it passed.
So the other, and the other piece of that is the legal citations, Bob, actually exist in IHBEA. Um, this is a, a part of that, and so the legal citations are there because the LAW Plan is based out of, uh, that big court case. So there actually isn't a legal citation for the plan itself, but it is, it is on the policy book.
Right, I didn't see the other pla- I don't recall seeing the other plan referenced in there. There were a few things referenced in lengths, but I didn't see that the other plan, I would think it would be referenced someplace, if that's the governing plan. It might be, and I just might have missed it. It was a lengthy plan.
Yeah, I, I believe it's there. I'll take a look, but it, it does, it does reference the court case. It does, uh, reference the Every Student Succeed Act. All the federal legislation is there.
Right. But we just figured if it, the other pla- based off the other plan, it would be referenced someplace that, in accordance with or something.
Yeah.
Okay, any other comments on the LAU? See, and then then we'll move to the District Wellness Plan. Any comments on the District Wellness Plan? I have a couple. So in the section that does, that is food and beverage marketing, the third bullet, since this is a template, obviously, the third bullet gives guidance on what should be put in,
Mm-hmm.
such as we don't go and have to change out our, our, uh, scoreboards right away or something like that. It's a note.
Right.
So the note I don't think is really necessary in there. That's for guidance purposes for those who are developing the, the plan.
This is actually in our current, it, this, that, that, that note is actually in our.
I'm not doubting that.
Yeah, I'm just saying, that's, that's why it's still there. Um, so.
Yeah.
It doesn't have to be there. Um, that's fine.
Well, read through it. If it makes sense to leave it in, which I don't see why, especially something that talks about a process that started years ago, they're still referring to, you, you don't need to change it right now. You can change it in the future because we're kind of in that future now.
I don't, I don't see any reason why it can't come out.
The other comment I hit, had is the Wellness Committee. Which board member serves on the Wellness Committee?
We've tried and tried. Nobody, nobody has ever taken anybody up, so if anybody's interested, we will take a board member on the Wellness Committee.
Dory's raising her hand.
All right, Dory, you're in. That's you.
Okay.
All right, because I don't remember getting many reports on the wellness, on what's going on in the Wellness.
They meet, uh, I think they meet monthly. So, Dory, you'll get invited to those meetings. Fantastic.
Thank you.
Yeah.
That's the only comments I have. Are there no other comments? Then we'll move to approve for first reading. Okay. All right.
Uh, Dory?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Andrea? I think Avery's here now.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, Stephanie?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. Yep.
Okay.
Stephanie?
Yeah.
Uh, Vicki?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Robbie?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
And Bob?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bob?
We're gonna.
Did we forget about 6.11, the agenda adjustment?
Yeah, because I just pulled up the agenda.
Right.
We forgot that we slid that in. I didn't have it to print out on.
Yeah, agenda adjustment 6.6.11.
Okay, so we'll move to that.
Or 6.11, so it would come after 6.
Oh, 6.11, okay.
Right, yeah, sorry. 6, 6.11, sorry.
Okay, my problem.
No, that was my fault. I should've said it differently.
All right, so we'll go to 6.3, the Principal Data Reports. I believe probably board members got hard copies.
Yep.
I did, but so here you go, take it away.
Right, Ben, you've got control of this.
I do. Long button, hold on.
Doesn't say not share, present.
Starting off to be a great evening. Thank you for joining us, everybody. Um, we'll start with, uh, Libby Tozier.
All right, so after the slides, I have, um, notes on what we're working on right now to support things. Um, it's very different this year, so the data will probably be noticeably different than what you're used to seeing, um, which I think was probably a little bit expected. So here's the, um, pre-K early literacy, which includes a little bit of math, but it's mostly focused on, on reading. Um, and it shows the, the fall of this school year and winter. So for pre-K, we just had a parent night. I think Kathy, um, mentioned some of this a few minutes ago in her report. Um, we had pretty good turnout. It was very informative. The, um, the best part about the Zoom parent nights is that we can record it and share it out, um, to everyone after, so I will miss that when we're back in person. Um, having that able to be shared when people are not there. So, um, Becky Dal Sandro helped, um, pre-K and K teachers pull this together, and they did a great job. It was nice to, to be there and watch. Um, and they picked, they picked the goals for that parent evening based on our current data. Pre-K teachers, um, in ed techs are doing Tier 2 support, sorry, Ben, um, in the classroom because we don't have Title I or any of those supports for pre-K, so they're working on supporting the Tier 2 level. Thank you. Your turn.
So Spash Primary School, um, and again, very similar conversation, uh, with, with, uh, Libby Tozier. Want to point out the, the benchmarks, though. So in the fall, when students came to school, the benchmark was at 438, and that the benchmark increased to 478, uh, for the winter, uh, testing, uh, cycle. So we can see that we had a lot of growth, uh, between fall and winter for pre-K and K, and something to remember is that our students in pre-K had, are, are having a full year of school. So instead of coming in for the half-days, you're spending two full days with us. Uh, so there, there really isn't a loss of time, uh, with teaching staff. which is very exciting. Some reason I can't, uh, there you go. So pre-K is full time. Uh, again, the parent night, uh, that Jamie and Kathy had talked about. And, uh, students at SPS are making swift to growth or, or are receiving tier two support, uh, throw through their classroom teachers. So , uh, Jalen Valley and Ray Brown do a phenomenal job, uh, supporting our littles, uh, through their work this year. That's Jamie.
All right. Um, kindergarten at Libby Tozier. So we have, um, their pre-K data here as well as their, their kindergarten data. So it shows last year, fall and winter, as well as this year, fall and winter. So you can see a, a little bit of a difference. Um, the red is a bit higher right now than it was the same time last year, um, due to so much missed, um, live instruction time. Um, but, uh, the, the green looks really, really great there. It's, um, it's not, not too shabby and hasn't gone down at all, um, from fall to winter, which is nice. So, um, we're working on those, those lower kiddos that are in red. Go ahead. So, um, our low numbers are helping support students academically right now. Um, that is one of the best things I, I think of the hybrid model is that, that low student teacher ratio. Um, we have had to do some regrouping of cohorts to meet educational needs, um, at Libby Tozier due to some changes in staffing. Um, the pre-K K parent night, uh, focused on letter naming, letter sound correspondence. So that again, I won't repeat all of that from the pre-K, but that was an amazing, um, event for parents to support kiddos at home. We have tier two interventions, um, including a strong focus on phonics. After looking at our data, we really saw that that was a need and Becky's supporting the teachers to, to work to improve that. We're looking at our curriculum resources moving forward as well. Um, and we have been moving more students as we can, um, sustain with, um, social distancing and whatnot to cohort C to have four days of in-person instruction. So, um, that's definitely a help for, for many of our kids. And we had 19 out of 36 students, not as high as I'd like it, but on the year that we're in, um, you know, that many is, is something to celebrate that showed growth this year from fall to winter.
And the primary school, uh, very, very similar, uh, conversation. Uh, did a phenomenal job, uh, with, uh, our kids this year. We, we do have, uh, a lot of growth with our students. It's not always represented in, in these charts, but, um, we had 43 students out of 53, uh, show 12 points of growth between the fall and the winter. So we're pretty proud of that. Great job, teachers. Um, we are focusing on tier two interventions with our students. Um, we have offered cohort C to students who need the added time, uh, within the classroom to become back on pace for this year with their peers. Um, we are working on grade level interventions to provide supports, uh, as our title programs are full. So we're, we're trying to, uh, really beef up our RTI programs to respond to students' needs and gaps in learning. Uh, we are focusing on phonics instruction, uh, more often, uh, more than usual at this time of year. We are also focusing on instructional practices in our math programming. Uh, we also are showing compassion, supporting our littles as best we can with the social emotional work, uh, through play. So. Back to you, Jamie.
Thank you. Um, so first grade this year in reading, um, when we get to the next slide in just a minute, this will be broken down a little bit more, but we do have a lot of students in first grade who take the, um, early literacy reading instead of the, um, the regular star reading test. So, um, some of the data looks a little bit different because of that. So we'll talk about that in just a minute. But this compares the early literacy test from kindergarten to the reading test from, from first grade. So this does not include all first graders because we have them taking two different star tests, um, based on their, their level. So we'll look at that a little bit more, but that's, um, all of the students that took the reading test are included in that graph.
Are these slides the same ones that we got in our package? I can't seem to get them to jive.
Um, probably not all of the additional slides with it. The data slides would be the same.
I was noticing that also, Bob.
I'm not sure what was sent to you. Um, we did have to make some adjustments on the benchmark numbers on the top. So if you're matching the benchmark numbers, um, that might be different, but the green, the actual charts should have been the same. I don't know, MJ, if you.
Yeah. So, so the, the slides that were sent and printed were the ones that had the double up. We were worried that you wouldn't be able to see the number well on the Zoom. So we printed just the ones that have like the one you're looking at right now. It doesn't have any benchmark data. I took it all off. It just has your two charts. Because it wasn't complete, the benchmark yet when we printed and sent them.
You can go to the next slide, Ben, please. Um, so first grade, there's a, a lot to talk about. Um, it is probably the most challenging in hybrid model. Um, it's the most rigorous year for reading with the expectation of moving almost a full Bountess and Pinnell level a month. Um, we've placed all students in blue, yellow, and red in Title One or special ed, some of our red kiddos. Um, we've moved more students again into cohort C as, as available, um, for that four day a week in-person instruction. And then a bit more about the, the double test. So more first graders took star reading in the winter versus in the fall. Um, in the fall, if students are unable to read the practice questions, they took early literacy instead. So the poor data does not end up showing up in the star reading report at all. As they develop reading skills over the course of the year, they can pass those practice questions on star reading. But they do not always perform well if they're still developing their decoding skills, which is most of first grade, and that's why we're focusing a lot on phonics right now. Um, the addition of those students can now pass the practice questions is reflected on the winter star reading report. So it's not apples to apples in that report, um, where we have them taking two different tests. And it's a different number of kiddos taking each of them in the fall as it is in the winter. Um, so at this time, five out of 10 students showed growth from fall to winter on the reading, on the regular star reading test. And 16 out of 22 showed growth from fall to winter on the early literacy test. So first grade gets a little bit confusing. And then first grade math. Um, their kindergarten early literacy, which has very little math. I'm sure Kathy could share a bit more about that if you, um, if you wanted more specifics on that, but it's, it's mostly reading. Um, and then that's compared to the first grade math test for star, which they do all take, um, in first grade, even though they're taking the early literacy for reading, still many of them. So the red has, has definitely moved down there, which is good to see. Sorry, Ben. Um, and yeah, so there's, you know, the greens gotten, gotten higher. So we're seeing some good things there. Um, in such a crazy year, we were dancing for joy on, on some of this stuff, which was really nice to see. Go ahead. Um, so we've placed all students in blue, yellow, and red in Title One or Special Ed. Um, we're moving more students into cohort C using freckle and other tier two interventions, um, in the classroom with classroom teachers to supplement weak areas for students. I did forget to put on the slide that we are planning some, um, some parent nights as well, um, for, uh, higher grade levels at the primary schools. And 10 out of 25 students showed growth from fall to winter in math.
The other piece with first grade and the math, as, uh, Jamie alluded to in terms of, uh, students that are struggling with the reading. Um, so during our fall, winter, it's spring benchmarks, we do, uh, take the audio off, um, so that students actually can see, um, their math abilities, it's similar to the, and the MEA. So we can actually kind of predict how kids will do on the MEA. But during progress monitoring, so in those, in between those, uh, universal screening benchmarks, we do put the audio on so we can actually tell what their mathematical skills are, not just their reading skills. Um, and that really plays a big part in first grade.
For sure. Yep. Thank you.
So to Spas Primary, I want to just repeat everything that Jim just said, along with Kathy, but I won't. So, uh, just looking at the growth again, uh, and concentrating on the fall, the winter data for, uh, this year, for, uh, our reading program. Again, we have very few students at the primary school who took the early literacy test. I think there's five and the rest took the, the star reading test. Um, and again, our growth, uh, for the early literacy, five out of five students, uh, had the expected amount of growth. So we're looking at 12 points or higher for this, for this assessment. Uh, for the star reading test, 37 out of 64 students had the expected amount of growth. And again, um, we had the parent night for pre-K K, but there are other parent nights coming up through title programs. And again, we're focusing on tier two interventions with students. Um, and we've offered cohort C to students who need the added time with their classroom to come back on pace. And we are working on developing, uh, specific grade level interventions to provide supports, uh, as our child programs are full at this time. And again, focusing on phonics instruction, focusing on best practices in math teaching and, uh, showing some compassion to all of us, because, uh, that's what it's about. Uh, our math data, again, uh, looking pretty good, uh, for us. Um, our students are making a lot of growth in math in first grade. Uh, 57 out of 73 students, uh, had the expected growth, uh, for this assessment, which is fantastic. And I can repeat these. This is the, the same statement I was going to say over and over again for each one of these slides, but focusing on tier two interventions, really trying to find the students that need the extra support and find time. And back to Jamie.
Thank you. Next time we need to go in reverse order. So you can go first, Ben. Um, so second grade, um, reading data. Again, it, it's nice to see that red going in the right direction and, and green as well, um, as we move from fall to winter, um, especially right now. Um, and you can kind of see the, the ripple effect from, from right to left there. Um, you know, different than last year for sure, but, but still moving in the right direction with where we need to head. So we have an essentials class this year at Libby Tozier in second grade. Um, it has small class size and additional resources, which includes, um, extra coaching support, Title One in-class, um, push-in support, more specific programs to meet foundational skill needs. Uh, this is the model we'll hope, we will follow as we move forward next year with essentials classes at all levels. They also have all students in red, yellow, and blue receiving Title One services. Um, we will be scheduling a parent night to support some of those low academic skills soon. And, um, besides the essentials class, we haven't, they're, they're all in cohort C. We have been moving cohort C stu-, uh, more students to cohort C as needed to give them the extra time in class. Um, and there were just four students who took the early literacy test. Unfortunately, none of them showed, um, growth on that test, um, this time around, but 23 out of 32 students did show growth from fall to winter on the, the regular star reading test. Oh, that's me again. Sorry. Uh, here's math. So, um, not quite the right direction on the red here that we'd like to see. Um, but, uh, if I, I can't read those numbers quite well enough, but it's probably only a student or two, um, that have gone down in, in that area. Um, and we are seeing that, you know, blue went up some from fall to winter, so did green. So overall, this isn't too bad. Um, with a focus on a couple of those kids at the, at the red level. And for whatever reason, last year we saw the same thing from fall to winter with, with the, um, math test. And kind of the same thing I just said about the reading, the essentials classes in place for grade two. Um, all of the students in red, yellow, and blue are receiving Title One or Special Ed support, uh, moving more kids to cohort C, and 23 out of 42 students showed growth from fall to winter in math.
Uh, very similar to what, uh, Ms. Yola had just shared, but, uh, at the primary school did a fantastic job with the growth in math this year. Uh, very, very pleased with the results. Um, and again, the difference between the fall and the winter for those students in urgent intervention, it's, it's small, two or three students, uh, that we, that we, that we know. So 43 out of 64 students had the expected amount of growth for this assessment, which is great. Again, focusing on tier two invention, uh, interventions, offering cohort C students who need the added time to, you know, come back for, for four days a week. And working on a real level interventions to revise supports, uh, as our top programs are full. So um, looking at math, again, great job. Uh, again, looking at, uh, a, a lot of students making movement to being proficient, which is fantastic. Uh, 54 out of 66 students had the expected amount of growth and, uh, we are really concentrating hard. We spent the last three PLGs, uh, looking at what interventions we are supplying and looking how to record those interventions so we can keep a detailed, uh, journal on our RTI interventions placed on students this year. So a little of the data from the primary school. So 30 students, um, had positive outcomes from our SST team this year. So that we've, we've gotten the back in the fold. It's great. We have, uh, Jalen Valleys here, hopefully, uh, watching. We have a second place, uh, second place win with our winter kids for our winter kids mascots, No Way The Snowflake, uh, produced by our pre-K littles. Um, very proud of Jan and her program for that. This is our second award this year for Winter Kids Program, which is pretty exciting. Uh, we have one staff member that's recognized throughout the state as a lifesaver and, uh, our school resource officer, Officer Jones, has recorded a book by Peggy Rathbun called Officer Buckle and Gloria, which is a fantastic book on safety tips. And it's, uh, pretty humorous. And we're, Officer Jones has been making himself present at the primary school and the middle school by walking the hallways and sharing lunches with kids. So it's been, it's been good to have, uh, NSRO back in the building. I have a, I have a, well, yeah, I'll just share it. This is, uh, this is our Winter Kids winner video from, uh, There you go. Thank you for the intelligence. I appreciate that. Uh, great job to the, uh, pre-K students from the Miss Valley, Miss Brown. So. Moving on to Carrie Ricker's school, Jamie.
All right. So third grade reading. So this is a little bit different this year. Um, so what you're looking at right now is Libby Tozier second grade reading scores compared to third grade reading at Carrie Ricker, which obviously also includes, um, Sabatys Primary. So that, that right side of the slide will be exactly the same when we get to the one that shows, um, the SPS data as well. But, um, you'll see it did moving down a little bit in the red. Um, yellow and blue are moving up. Hopefully that'll bump a little more to the left next time. Um, the dark green is, is a chunk higher, which is nice to see. So this is, this is really good for the year that we're in and, um, you know, they're, they're working hard to keep moving in the right direction with this data. So, um, then is the next one, the, the SPS one. No. Okay. So you'll see the same slide twice. Um, teachers have worked in a responsive way based on the data. They've adapted learning plans that go home to families every week, um, to support weaker areas in the curriculum. They're using freckle to differentiate for their students. We will be having a freckle challenge in March that, um, I've got to fine tune with our team leaders, team leaders and whatnot, and, um, share that with staff and students so that we can get a bigger push for freckle. They're not doing a bad job at all right now, but a little bit more, um, we do see a good correlation between freckle usage and star scores improving. Um, teachers are offering interventions and reading for their students in the absence of Title One reading at this time. Uh, office time in the afternoon and on Wednesdays is being used for individual support as needed for students. So one-on-one Zoom time or supporting parents sometimes with how to help their kiddos on, on remote days has been a big help. Uh, 52 out of 90 students showed growth from fall to winter in reading in third grade. And here's, so the same, same slide on the right, um, and then the SPS second grade data, um, matched to that. And I'm not going to read this to you because it's the same, same exact slide that I just read. And then math. So again, you're comparing to all, all third graders, um, broken up by LTS and SPS. Uh, so again, you know, the, the red is moving in the right direction. Yellow and blue are headed upward and, and keep trickling over to the left, um, for third grade math is our, our hope for the next round of testing. Um, again, adapting learning plans, um, working responsibly to the, the data, using freckle to differentiate for students. We do have Title One support in place for math. Um, most of our yellow students are in Title One. I know kids are graduating out of, out of Title One, which is great to hear. I think we had 12 kiddos that, that were, um, kind of kicked out because they were, they'd improved so much, um, the last time we looked at data. At our recent workshop day that we had, um, third grade staff saw that time and money were extremely low. Um, time and money are not taught in isolation through our investigations program. So students are not learning it to a mastery level. Teachers are working on ways to supplement that to support those areas. Um, again, the office time and the Wednesday time, um, is super helpful to support students one-on-one. And we are working constantly to keep pushing kiddos to cohort C if it looks like a good fit for them as we can fit them. And 55 out of 90 students showed growth from fall to winter for third grade math. Just let you look at the SPS data for a minute. And then the next slide is exactly what I just shared. All right, fourth grade reading. Again, red's going in the right direction, yellow and blue are starting to move upward, and even the dark green is up quite a chunk there. So, you know, hoping that that continues as we move forward. Sorry, Ben, you can't relax for too long. Teachers have worked again responsibly to the data, adapted learning plans, using freckle to differentiate, offering interventions and reading for their students in the absence of title one. That office time and Wednesday time is a big support. And I think Mrs. Davidson is actually here tonight on the board meeting. But she, oh, I left the tea off. She is using technology better than I was when I typed on this slide. More students access her classroom. More instructional time is obviously much better than if they're working individually in a remote setting. And we are moving more students to cohort C as we've seen fit. And forty-four out of eighty-six students had growth from fall to winter in fourth grade reading. Fourth grade math, again, we've seen those, some of those colors go in the right direction. There's a big improvement in green here, and we took a nice chunk off of the red. So when we had our workshop day looking at data, the fourth grade team noticed multiplication and division were weaknesses in the data. Plan to continue working on tier one and tier two supports at this time. That actually is what they were on for units and investigations. So the hope is that with that strong tier one support in instruction, they would end up seeing that increase at the next benchmark or progress monitoring time. All students in yellow, or I should say most students in yellow are receiving title one math services right now. Again, Mrs. Nguyen Dyke is graduating kiddo is out of, out of that support, which is a nice thing to see. That office time and Wednesday is helpful again. And then my typo that I copied and pasted onto this slide with Mrs. Davidson. I wish we had time for show and tell because it's pretty impressive, the stuff that she's learned with some support from Norma Jean and whatnot. But Judy's pretty quick to just pick it up and go with it too, which is nice to see. And she likes to share with her peers, so they're, they're learning from her pretty quickly. Moving students to see as needed, and fifty-seven out of eighty-nine students showed growth from fall to winter in fourth grade math. Fifth grade reading. Again, we're kind of seeing very similar patterns, I think, in the red on most of these slides. Green jumped up quite a bit from fall to winter on this one. Working in responsive ways again, based on the data, adapting learning plans, using freckles to help differentiate, offering interventions and reading to support with an absence of title one right now. That office time in Wednesdays and moving kiddos to cohort C. We've moved quite a few weeks, in the past few weeks, there have been lots of conversations about that to really help out with that as we can fit them. Fifty-two out of ninety-one students showed growth from fall to winter in fifth grade reading. And math, a little chunk off on the red, which is nice. Green went up again and dark green did as well, which is nice to see. I can't say how happy that makes me. I think the teachers too, we did celebrate. We were pretty happy that, I think what I was picturing on this COVID hybrid year that we're in was way worse than what we got. So this is something to celebrate for sure. So we did talk about this a lot when we met at the workshop day. And this is the same things, other than we do have title one for students who are in yellow. And again, they're working on learning plans using freckle and moving kiddos to see as we can. And fifty-two out of ninety-three students had growth from fall to winter in fifth grade math.
Moving on to the middle school. Looking at sixth grade reading, we see that year to year, of course, you know, different data, different benchmarks, right? So looking, concentrating on this year, the fall benchmark was at six eighty-four and it jumped to seven thirty-one in the winter. And yet we still had some strong growth with quite a few of our students. Forty-eight out of ninety-one students made the expected amount of growth for this assessment. Again, focusing on tier two interventions, so we're spending a lot of quality time during our PLG work on Wednesdays, coming up with interventions for students in our academic programs. We've offered some cohort C students who need the added time to join us, you know, on a four-day schedule, working on agreeable interventions to provide supports within the content areas focusing on phonics. Kathy has helped us secure a really great reading program, and we've done the pre-assessments for that. And we will have a building-wide phonics program starting the day after February break with our students, which we're excited to see. We have a literacy coach, Mrs. Matthew, is working on with pull-out groups, supporting phonics instruction along with understanding of the content within the story. Mrs. Buck, our method interventionist, is working with pull-out groups, supporting instruction as well as gap-filling, missing content for our math kids. And our remote students are starting a full-time schedule on the Monday we return back from break. So those students will be joining live classes using the new technology that we purchased with the cameras in the classroom. And we are really hoping that extended time with cohort D in our classes will benefit us moving forward. Looking at our math data again, concentrating on the 2021 data, we're seeing a twenty-point increase in the benchmark data between the two assessments, and we're seeing a fair amount of growth, which is pretty exciting. Fifty-five out of ninety-five students have moved the expected amount of growth. And I won't read through what we're doing a second time, so. Seventh grade data, again, concentrating on 2021. You know, looking at a fair amount of growth with our students from blue, yellow to green, which is pretty exciting. And forty out of ninety-seven students have made the expected amount of growth this year for seventh grade on this assessment, which is great. Again, seventh grade is focusing on the tier two interventions. We're really trying to hone in on our RTI interventions, which is something we've always worked on, but it's getting, it's getting really personal now. So we're spending a lot of our office hours, the hour after. So school gets out at one o'clock and we have staff on duty until two fifteen. So we use that hour to meet with students and we're focusing on Wednesday interventions, inviting cohort to kids to come join us in our classes to provide them support for their content. And the rest of this is the same with a really great reading in seventh grade as well. Literacy coach pulling students out as well and remote students joining us for a full schedule coming back from February break. Looking at seventh grade math, you know, a fair amount of growth there as well. So a lot of the students in the lower end are making progress. And feeling pretty confident about this. So we have fifty-three out of one hundred and six students made the expected growth. And again, focusing on our RTI processes and making sure we can find time to work with our students who need support in our content areas. Looking at eighth grade reading, again, pretty good amount of growth for eighth grade reading for this assessment. We have sixty out of ninety-four students make the expected amount of growth. Again, with a really great reading, Tracy Remington has done a great job with implementing the really great reading assessment prior to us starting, and she has come up with two cohorts of kids that need the intervention. So we'll be starting that coming back in January. Looking at the math, again, phenomenal growth in the mid-range. So we see a lot more students with a light green being more proficient, which is great. So we're seeing a lot of movement, which is exciting. And same interventions as we've applied before, fifty-six out of ninety-one students have made the expected amount of growth, which is very exciting for us. Any questions on the middle school before I move to the high school? Just want to throw in one more slide here. We've had forty-two positive outcomes from our SST committee. These are students who either had issues with attendance or with academics, and we've seen them turn it around, which is exciting. We've given out a hundred and thirty-six academic awards, eighty-five citizenship awards, twenty-seven academic excellence awards, and twenty-four exemplary student awards. We've had fifteen student of the month awards so far this year. And we've had seventy-five plus students have received a positive note card home from us in the mail. So we've given over out, we've given over a hundred and sixty, you know, positive notes or certificates to students so far this year. And we're really excited about that. Moving on to Marco at Oak Hill High School. Go ahead, Marco.
All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you very much for a few moments to talk about the data at the high school level. I'm going to be speaking in general terms in regards to our data because overall it is not where it has been in the past. Obviously, that is reflective of the COVID situation that we're living through. Would also like to mention that this is also a different way or different format that we've given the STAR tests. Prior to my arrival at the high school, the tests were given during radar connection, which is a shorter amount of period and not in a specific content area of testing. When I came on board, we changed that. However, due to the circumstances of the master schedule with the four-by-four schedule, we are unable to test the students in their specific content area, all of them, only because some kids are taking English classes and some aren't, depending on the semester that they're in. So with that being said, what you're going to see is testing results that are essentially often referred to in my terms as a slide to the right, which is not a dance phrase, nor is it a dance step, but it's just reflective of the data that we're looking at right now. So you can see here, this is the eighth grade, or these are current ninth graders, but it's in comparison from eighth to ninth grade in reading in particular. And you could see obviously that there is a slide to the right, which you're going to hear me repeat a little bit here as we move forward. So you can see that happen. Then you could kick it to the next slide. Thank you to math, again, eighth grade math. You can see the winter results prior to COVID and the winter results during COVID from one year to the next. This is our current tenth graders, their ninth grade reading and tenth grade reading. You can see there's a little bit of growth there as far as winter to winter is concerned with the, from their ninth grade year to their tenth grade year. But overall, again, not the results that we would like to see as they have shifted to the right. Math, ninth grade, tenth grade math, winter results, again, a slide to the right. Tenth grade reading, so these are current eleventh graders, so tenth grade reading to eleventh grade. You can see, again, it's holding steady in some spots, but then sliding again to the right, especially in the area of red from one test window to the next year over year. To math, for our eleventh graders, holding steady with their at-benchmark results. A little bit of an uptick or. Oh, sorry, did somebody say something? Nope, okay. So a little bit of an uptick with our on-watch and decrease, excuse me, increase in the yellow. Sorry, that was opposite of that. That's what I meant to say. Moving on to the next one. We've got eleventh and twelfth grade. So you can see here, consistent as far as the winter results are concerned, year over year to a certain extent. But again, a slide to the right. And last but not least, we have eleventh, twelfth grade math. And again, slide to the right. Even though I presented some numbers here that are not flattering, I would like to say that there have been some positive things that have happened in regards to the number of students that we've had in the building. So overall, you know, we're looking at really high success rate as far as students passing classes. As I said, probably in a different board report in regards to bar and especially ninth grade students. So both quarters, quarter one and quarter two, we had eighty percent of our students pass their classes, which is the highest number of students that we've ever had pass classes for freshmen in the time that we've been doing bar. So this is the third year that we've been doing that. We're looking at implementing bar next year for tenth grade students to continue that success. And last but not least, I'd like to mention that we've done a really nice job in regards to keeping our eleventh and twelfth grade students on track for graduating, regardless of, you know, the situation that we're living in. We're not entertaining or looking at any requirements, I should say, as far as the number of credits are concerned going away, because we have a very small number of seniors that are in danger of not graduating. And one, only one student who right now is not able to graduate just because of some past discretion. So otherwise than that, that is the information I had to share in regards to the high school.
Robbie's got a question.
Yeah, this is, this is to the whole team. Are we, do we know if the Marco's slide to the right problem is what cohort they are, A, B, C, or D predominantly?
We didn't, we didn't break it down. We just wanted to show you the actual cohort of students. So like in terms of graduation class, to actually show that what the pandemic change was for the whole class. I could certainly pull that data and present it next time in terms of, is there a difference in the different cohorts? I will say, doing the assessment was, is challenging with remote learners, fully remote learners and trying to get them and, you know, the validity and the reality, you know, reliability of doing it on, in a remote setting, especially for our, you know, just troubleshooting some of our primary kids. You know, it's just been a challenge. So it's hard to show apples to apples here, but we wanted to, it's the only assessment that we had to kind of show winter to winter and just kind of how that COVID impact has happened, you know, our spring. But we could certainly look at our data in, it's not just STAR, right? We could look at how kids are performing in jump rope with their standards. And so those would probably be easy reports too, if you wanted to think about, is there a difference pieces? But I will say it is challenging in some ways because we have moved kids fluidly, depending on what their need is from one cohort to the other. So it's hard, we track that on their data card and we track it in IC, but it would be hard to kind of say like if they're in cohort C right now, or if they might not have been C the whole year. So I think that's why we felt like we needed to do it by grade level because kids have been moving back and forth. You know, especially during, after Thanksgiving and Christmas, we had a lot of parents who chose to keep them home. So we didn't necessarily change cohorts, but they changed how much instruction they got in-person days. So there's just been a lot of variables, so it wouldn't be a very clean report. It would actually.
Well, I was just wondering if the cohort, the cohort D, and I would assume it was harder to get cohort D kids to do, you know, the testing.
Yeah, I think the, you know, I would say cohort D in general has harder time with attendance and engagement than the others on their remote days. And so whether you're looking at an actual assessment data, just naturally trying to connect with them and get them to complete work is just a bigger challenge for us. Yeah, you know, the administrators have done a great job of either moving them or making plans with them. As Ben has said, like even cohort D to continue cohort D from first semester to second semester, they had to do an application. So we have a lot of plans for that, but in terms of like looking at the data, there's been so much movement between quarantines and changes in cohort, it would be hard to tell that.
All right, Jen, you have a question?
Well, to kind of go along with what you were saying, that there are too many moving variables, I would also be curious to see the shift of going to the block scheduling, how much that affects these statistics over time as well? Because if you have students that are primarily doing certain classes, English and whatever, and not revisiting math until the following year. that's going to affect test scores as well. So that long range data to me would be really valuable. And all, you know, there's just a lot of pieces with this that it's hard to determine what singular thing is kind of creating the result. I also had a question. Throughout the primary and grade schools and middle school, there's this reference of encouraging kids to come to cohort C. What on average of numbers of that are you kind of offering to kids? Because I'm just curious as to what sort of, you know, the, the kind of the thing that I'm hearing a lot of is how much parents and students need to be in school, but I'm wondering how many are being offered that? And how many are actually taking advantage of it?
So speaking about the primary school and the middle school, this came up as an intervention primarily at the primary school first due to the fact that we ran out of Title One room. So we went once Title One was full and even though there was a changeover with this winter assessment, we still have a bunch of kids who aren't able to fit into that Title One mold due to lack of space. So those students, instead of lining them up for a special education referral, we've taken those students and we found room for them in the classrooms. The problem facing now is, of course, no, no one's saying no to that. When you call a parent up and offer cohort C, they're all aboard. And where we are maxing out right now are classrooms with the amount of kids we can safely put in them. We've even added some extra desks and some classes because we could squeeze them in, but we probably at this point are, are full in the end. The middle school is a little more complicated. So if a student is receiving any other resource, if they're receiving a five or four or a IEP, then it's very complicated to move them to cohort C because we can't duplicate the services because we don't have the staff to do that. But we have taken some students who say have had attendance issues or socially emotionally haven't been able to come for two days a week and we've worked them into the schedule. And that's worked pretty well for us. But again, you know, going to cohort C from court A or court B isn't, isn't kind. It really isn't a kind thing to do to a kid because they're going to get that lesson on Monday and Tuesday. And then repeated on Thursday and Friday, but there isn't an extra body to support them with the work that was asked to be done on Thursday and Friday. So it is, it seems like a great idea, but it really needs a special person to do it. A, a certain family that's supportive. You know, makes it work.
And, and the other thing, go, go ahead, Kathy.
Well, thank you for that clarification because I know, you know, from a parental standpoint and student standpoint, that people do want the kids to be in school, but it's exactly as you said, that if they're getting literally the same instruction in two day chunks, then that's not necessarily beneficial unless they need that framing of reteaching.
We're using that again as a replacement for putting in a special education referral. We're, we're doing this first as an intervention.
Yeah.
Yeah, you, you can really look at, oh, go ahead.
For some kids, they're actually going to one teacher on Monday, Tuesday, and they're going to a different teacher on Thursday, Friday. So they're staying with the cohort, right, in their cohort, but it allows them to get the same material, but offered in a different instructional way because every teacher has their own spin on it. So for those kids who need it repeated, it's repeated, but in a different way, one might catch the, the kid's ability to be proficient versus the other. So we have tried, I will say, the administrative team and the SST teams at each building has done a great job of looking at particular kids and making those pieces. And for some, you know, like Ben said about Title One, we've averaged about in each building were, you know, I wouldn't say dismissed. I would say we've moved them from tier two B to tier two A where the classroom teacher monitors. We've moved about 15 to 20 kids in each, in each reading or math, depending on what we offer at the buildings, which is encouraging. So kids are actually moving from red, yellow, or blue to green and that they're proficient enough to not need that heavy support. But we're doing that support on their remote days and we do have parents who are not, are opting out of title. And so that's kind of another option. Like if they can't manage it, how do we provide that intervention in a different way? And so we've become really creative to how to do that.
Yep.
And I think, you know, the other thing too is Jen hits it on the head. There are just so many variables, you know, in, in, you know, normal time, it's easy. I'm really proud of our teachers and our administrators because they, they own their data, which is, you know, I don't hear excuses for the reality of it all and the amount of variables that go into what make the data. It's really hard to drill that down and yet they spend hours drilling into, okay, where is this? I mean, you saw it, you know, time, we, we drilled in to find time and money and multiplication, you know, those breaking down those discrete skills. But you're absolutely correct. The variables that exist right at the moment are, are a little overwhelming for sure.
All right. I have a question. Ben, you said you're going to move the remote kids to, they're going to watch the classes. So they're going to be just like you with the C, they're going to get the same lesson on Monday and Tuesday as they get on Thursday and Friday. Where if they were fully remote, wouldn't they've been getting five different left, five different lessons?
No, they're going to be joining one cohort or the other. So some of our grade levels at the middle school only have, we're down to 10 or 11 students in cohort D. So
All right. So they're going to, all right. So they're going to be in a cohort, assigned to cohort. They're just going to be in that cohort remotely.
Right.
Instead of, so they're really not, so, you know, so I, the way I understood what you're saying was that they were going to be watching the teacher teach five days a week and we only have them there for four anyways.
No, it's, it's two days and the, the issue we're having now at the middle school level anyways, our cohort D is getting a, is getting one content area per day for a half hour only. So this is doubling up legitimately, making it a little more equitable for them. And we're really excited to be able to do this. And I can't thank you guys enough for the technology to make this happen. This really should help us, you know, clear, clear the plate for some of these, we're suffering.
Okay. Any other questions on the slide presentation? All right. Then we'll move on to the update on the water damage.
Yeah. So I'll, I'll start here and then I'll let Glenn take over. So as you guys are all aware, it was last week. The days are running together right now. We got, we had some pipe break in the industrial technology room at the high school. It's quite a bit of damage due to, due to freezing pipes. So I don't know, Glenn, if you want to kind of update everybody on where that's at. You're muted right now, Glenn.
Sorry about that. So good evening, everyone. So yeah, we, unfortunately, we had a pipe freeze up and we had some water damage in the building. We had Siemens come in also to check out the heating system. We had a plumber come in. It wasn't a domestic water line. We got that all repaired and our custodial staff did a fabulous job cleaning up the water, cleaning up the mess and also taking out the old insulation that got wet. So that doesn't turn into a mold issue. Getting the place dried out, we rented some dehumidifiers and got, got everything dried out and then put back a new insulation. Today we had a company from called True Team. They're an installation company out of Yarmouth to come in and look at tightening up the building. If you remember when we did the roof project, we, we had some insulation issues with the company that put the trusses in and we had some gaps. So we brought them back in to fill in those gaps. Unfortunately, we, we missed not a huge area, but a big enough to create this issue. So talking to Andy, talking to Scott, we wanted to bring in a company to tighten up the envelope of the building and that's what they're going to give us proposal on within the next couple of days. So I'm also reaching out to a second quote to, to do that. So we can fill in these little areas and hopefully eliminate these type of problems.
It was, it was an interesting phenomenon, really, just, just how it all happened. The wind must have been blowing just right. But when you think about this for a second, it was a domestic water line. So had it been a, a heat line, the boilers actually would have tripped off and would have stopped it. If we were still on a well, which I'm really glad we're not, obviously, but had we been on the well, the pump would have kicked off and the damage would have been, it, it wouldn't have been nearly as extensive, but because we were on, you know, we're on city water, we got a continuous flow, it just flowed and flowed and, and we had checked the building, we're checking our buildings over the weekends now just because of the cold weather and building had been checked at noon the day before and, and by six o'clock the next morning, Glenn, the lower wing, industrial technology, the classrooms down there were flooded. And, and so, you know, insurance is, insurance adjuster is taking a look and obviously they'll, that will help. But it was a pretty unfortunate situation. Glenn, is the industrial technology lab usable at this point?
Yes, everything is, is usable. We're still working with Mr. McCarthy. He's going through his equipment to find out what needs to be repaired and what doesn't. Once I get that lift, we can, list, we can send that off to the adjuster.
So, you know, when I got there on Monday, it was, it, it, the water was up, but it wasn't up. I mean, we'll, we're going to see some long-term effects from the volume of water just in flooring alone. We'll have flooring lift, things like like that. So as, as, as Lorian from Siemens said, he'd never really seen anything like it. It was an inch and a half domestic water line that burst. When I got there in the afternoon, they were still icicles hanging from the ceiling. So it was something he had never seen before either. So got it all cleaned up. Like I said, Glenn, like Glenn said, we're going to take a look at the building envelope to make sure we tighten some places up. Hopefully that'll take care of this happening again in the future.
Any questions? All right, we'll move on to 6.5 to approve the following administrators for two-year contract from July 1st, 2021 to June 30th, 2023. It's Jenny Johnson, Assistant Principal Sabatius Primary Oak Hill Middle School, and Samantha Garrett Sasse, Assistant Principal Oak Hill High School.
So moved.
That's it. Moved by Joan, seconded by Robbie. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll take the vote.
All right.
Did you say Bob?
I did, yep.
Okay, yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Robbie?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Vicky?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Andrea?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And Dory?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you very much.
6.6 to approve extending the following central office administrators for an additional contract year from July 1st, 2022 to June 30th, 2023. Scott Eldridge, the business manager, Kathy Martin, Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, and Glenn Reynolds, Director of Operations. A motion please.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? I mean, then we'll call for the vote.
All right, Dory?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Andrea?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Vicky?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Robbie?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
And Bob?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, 6.7 to approve the following central office administrator for a two-year contract from July 1st, 2021 to June 30th, 2023. Nancy Dryer, Special Ed Director. Motion please.
So moved.
Second.
Moved, Jo, Jo seconded.
Please.
Any discussion? All right, call for the vote.
Bob?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Robbie?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Vicky?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Andrea?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And Dory?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. 6.8 to approve extending the following administrators for an additional contract year from July 1st, 2022 to June 30th, 2023. Marco Albede, Principal Oak Hill High School. Norma Jean Audette, Network Administrator for the District. Jamie Eila, Principal Libby Tozer, Cary Ricker Schools. Melissa Gagnon, Guidance Director, Oak Hill High School. Ames Palmer, Adult Ed Athletic Director. And Benjamin Wilson, Principal Sabatius Primary Oak Hill Middle Schools. A motion please.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? And then I'll call for the vote.
All right, Dory?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Andrea?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Vicky?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Robbie?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
And Bob?
Yes.
Motion carries.
6.9 to approve the following administrator to a one-year contract from July 1st, 2021 to June 30th, 2022. Michael Jack, Assistant Principal Libby Tozer, Cary Ricker Schools. Motion please.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? And then I'll call for the vote.
Bob?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Robbie?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Vicky?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Andrea?
Yes.
Andrea said yes.
She did? Oh, I couldn't hear it. I'm sorry. Joe?
Yes.
And Dory?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. 6.10 to elect Emily Sue Baker as the English Language Arts Teacher at Oak Hill High School for the 2020-2021 school year as recommended by the Superintendent of Schools. Motion please.
So moved.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded. Discussion. Hearing none, call for the vote.
Bob?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Robbie?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Vicky?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Andrea?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And Dory?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right, 611, if you want to read the motion there, Andy, I don't have
I do. Yeah. So 6, 611 is a motion to approve a leave of absence for Valerie Safford for the remainder of the 2020-21 school year.
May I have a motion please?
So moved.
Moved and seconded?
Yes.
All right, discussion?
Well, and I, and I, I will say, I would recommend that you do, you do approve this. Val's a a longtime employee of the district and due to some health reasons, she's requesting this. And I would, I would ask that you approve this for her.
Any other discussion? Vicky?
How are you on filling the position?
We're okay. Yeah. We, we actually have a temp in currently. We went out, out for a temp instead of, I mean, we didn't hire someone for the position. So so we went with a temp. It's, it seems, I mean, I can ask Ben, but I think it's worked out pretty well. Things are going pretty smoothly. The first person that we had as a temp actually got a full-time we have a new temp now and so, but, but Ben's good at training. So I think, I think things are going pretty well.
Yeah. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote.
Dory?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Andrea?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Vicky?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Robbie?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
And Bob?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, committee reports. Finance Facilities Committee, next.
Yep, next meeting, we didn't meet.
All right, Personnel Policy Committee?
That'll also be next meeting.
Things are quiet.
All right, CAI Technology Committee?
We met tonight to go over the proposed program of studies for the next year and information in regards to that, the number of credits has not changed for graduates to achieve. However, looking at adding more electives and really looking, the other piece that Marco had mentioned earlier tonight was that bar program is going to be extended to 10th grade to help with student success in the high school level. The other piece that went with this was we got a technology report from Norma Jean. And the biggest piece is the cameras that will allow for synchronous learning.
And the biggest piece is the cameras that will allow for synchronous learning for the cohort D students in particular. And she just gave a brief update about the servers and the firewalls for hotspots for families to make sure that people are accessing information appropriately. The use of Google meets for people and really teaching them how to utilize that. And for the middle school, that there's going to be a remote coding club starting up after February break, which I think will, there's already 64 students who are interested. So that's pretty awesome.
Any questions? My question is, if we're going to add more electives, are we going to decrease the number of required courses so that they can take electives? Or are we just going to put more electives out there for the few elective slots that they have available?
So there are some requirements and there are restructuring of classes. In particular, US History and the Civics piece, it used to be a government class that was separate. And they are now reworking that so that after this coming year, it's all going to be taught as US History and Government Class, which will help consolidate the number, if you will, in restructuring. The other thing is that it has become required from the state to have a half-year personal finance class, and that has been worked with Angela Roy and will be available to students in 10th through 12th grade. The one concern that I brought to the, to the group was that the flip requirement has been reduced to two credits. And my concern was that in the times that we are in now, I, I, I see both sides of it. I understand that we want to have more electives, to have kids more engaged in specified areas. But at the same time, I also see a huge benefit for having kids with lifelong health and wellness and the importance of flip. And my question about the enrollment of electives, it's, that will be determined by how many students actually go into the classes because of the scheduling, because there, it's going to be done on like a interest level as opposed to we're going to offer everything broad brush.
So you will, Bob, be seeing a modified, I'll be bringing a modified policy IKF to the policy committee to, that, to represent some of these changes. So we'll be coming to the full board. So.
The other piece of information, Bob, is that as it gets closer, scheduling is always really tricky, having done it myself for years. As it gets closer, Mel will have a better concrete number of how many students will be enrolled in certain classes, and they're going to bring that report to us of enrollment numbers in the classes, specifically the electives, so that we're not overstretching, if that makes sense.
Yeah, thank you. Because in years past, the curriculum, the, the whole course load every, came every year before the board to be approved. And we looked at the class sizes from the previous year to go and say, well, if we only had four kids in that class, you know, you know, maybe that was a class we didn't need to carry on. And did we really need to continue to require the courses that we do require? Or the, or the number of credits that we do require for graduation? Since we, obviously like every other school system, probably in a state, require more than what the state requires. So we have our own, own requirements for additional courses. So that's something that we haven't done lately. We haven't done it for quite a while. I mean, this isn't, I don't think this, before Andy took over.
I, we haven't, we haven't done it since before I, I mean, it hasn't happened in my entire time in RSU 4. So.
Yeah. So it was, you know, it, it's just interesting that the board reviews, I mean, the committee does a great job and look at some stuff and coming up with some recommendations to the board to go and explain policy changes or what the current policy is. So that it could be reviewed at least on a periodic basis. I think Vicki shook her head. She remembers back when we used to see the whole curriculum. Robbie's nodding as well. So, you know, it's something that was the practice in this school district going back a number of years. So it'd be interesting to kind of at least get some kind of presentation on what it is. And maybe the board would like, depend upon a discussion like some other further review done on it. But.
But, and definitely, I mean, I think it'll be part of, you know, when, when policy, I requirements policy comes, that certainly will spark some more conversation for sure. But I think, I, I think what, you know, I think what the CAI committee saw today was a, a move in the right direction. Marco and I have been talking about this for, for a while now. So I'm, I'm excited that we're going to be doing that.
Okay, any other comments? Thank you, Jen. At this time, we'll go to board member comments. I'm not hearing any. We have no executives scheduled for tonight.
Nothing.
So before I adjourn, I want to thank everybody for attending. I saw at one point, we have, we currently have 30 participants. That's nine board members. We got about seven or eight administrators. And that means we have a good number of the community watching these meetings. And that's great because you could get real information about what we're really saying and really discussing and not necessarily incorrect information, which has a tendency to get out there sometimes. So at this time, with no other business to come before the board, I will declare this meeting adjourned.
All right, thank you all.
Okay.
We adjourned at 12:00.
Everybody, be safe.
Thank you.
Stay, stay well.
Good night, everyone.
Bye.
Keep warm.
Yeah. Minus 19 for my.